Good, please.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time that we can all come together and make decisions about our town, just be with each and every one of us as we discuss city matters, and that at the end you will be glorified. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, number, item number two on the agenda. Do we have any public comment, community announcements, recognitions? None. Item number three, consent agenda, agenda item number A. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve consent agenda item A.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? No? Well, let's submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the vote. Unanimous for the individuals that are in attendance today. Item number four, discussion of possible action authorizing staff to adopt the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund ordinance reflecting changes in the Guthrie City Manager option and a plan in the joiner agreement. You have staff comments on that?
Thank you, Your Honor. This change reflects going, going to a daily valuation basis. This has been vetted by the IRS, and it's a requirement that the staff, that the city authorize the staff to adopt this, this new agreement, new plan. This was first instituted and adopted when Matt Mueller was coming on some years back. So this is something that we've already done. This is just making that change to this agreement.
Okay.
And that, that is only the city manager, right?
That's correct. Only the city, this is a city manager option. And if you have any questions, Jim is here.
And it, this is something that's required by the IRS. It's mandated by the IRS?
The, the, the plan was modified to, as Larry said, to reflect or have the ability to do daily valuations for the participants, and, and Matt is still a participant, so the city still maintains that plan and will maintain that city manager plan. So in order to do that, we first, about three months ago, the previous council approved the trust indenture, and now you're approving the joiner agreement and the actual plan that had been then approved by the IRS. So did that make sense? Could I, okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a, a motion to, a move to, so moved. Second. Any other discussion or questions of Jim? Okay, submit your vote.
All votes are in.
And it's unanimous for all those individuals in attendance. That adjourns our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting. And I will call to order our city council meeting, and before we get into any of the agenda items, I'd like to welcome to our, our council chambers our interim city manager, Larry Pennell, sitting to my right, who has been with us for a number of weeks?
A week. Today.
Today's the week.
And my anniversary.
Anniversary, an anniversary date we're celebrating.
Yeah.
But welcome, welcome to Guthrie, welcome to our chambers, and thank you for what you've already done in a week.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here.
Okay, consent agenda, item number two, consent agendas, items A through H. I will entertain a motion to approve all items A through H in a second. So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
I was just thinking, Brian asked me about item H, I don't know if he wanted to pull it or not, so, and talk about it separately. Brian, did you want to do that or not?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Just making sure it didn't pass you.
All right. No further discussion, submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
Can we see them? It's unanimous vote to approve that motion by all individuals in attendance. Item number three, discussion on possible action of lease agreement between the city of Guthrie and Dream Portal's production for Taloa Music and Arts Festival. Is there a staff comment, staff reports?
Cody, would you help us out on this, please?
Yeah, please, no, then we'll, I'll pick up.
Thank you very much for seeing this item, the Taloa Music and Arts Festival put on by Dream Portal Productions. Unfortunately, Nathan Trotter with Taloa and Dream Portal could not make it tonight due to a family emergency. This is a festival looking to come to downtown Guthrie utilizing some camping space inside of mineral wells as well. I think the, the, the plan is for the cap of ticket sales to be about 5,000. Of course, pressure leases and ticket sales have already gone underway, but we, we do not know where current ticket sale numbers are right now or are projected for moving forward. So any questions you have, I, I'll try my best to answer.
Questions?
I have no questions on the, the festival itself. I do have some concerns about the contract that we have been presented. Actually, the, it has been changed a little bit from the one, two weeks ago, and it is, is what I can see, has been changed for the better, for the benefit of Guthrie and to protect Guthrie. I do have other things, or, and some of it is not that major, it's just some semantics of the way things are worded. I do have some concerns of the mineral wells park being used as a campground and using it as for heavy vehicular traffic. It may not be that that's, a major concern is that we do have car shows that do work down there, I'm just thinking for both safety and how we would keep heavier equipment out of the park area so it doesn't destroy the roots of the trees. If you drive over those trees, and now with all the rain and soft as it is, it can cause damage and hurt the trees. As far as other things, I have a list of bullet points here that not necessarily have to be gone over individually. I think for a good faith effort on Taloa, that they would put up a $2,500 deposit, non-refundable deposit for the show, that gets them in the game so that it shows that their good faith that things will be taken care of and that the facilities will be restored once the festival is over. That's really my two major concerns. Other things that I've talked it over with city attorney and with you, Cody, that we've discussed, so that it should be okay to go ahead and move forward with this, with the few modifications to the contract. Obviously, Mr. Trotter not being here, what we do tonight, I'm sure you will be able to discuss with him, what we, what we go over and what we, how we change the contract when he sees it, so.
Yeah, I have, I have some concerns also, and it has to do with, with some of the street closures that are being proposed. When we talk about closure of Cleveland and First Street, Oklahoma to Noble, it appears to me that that landlocks a number of, of businesses, including civic organization, American Legion, restaurants, shops, antique mall, landlocks them on all sides. And I think that's a, a challenge if we are looking at a Friday, especially Friday, Saturday encumbrance of, of that, of that access.
Correct. And just to let you know, Mayor, city staff has gone ahead and tried to talk to some of those businesses, we talked to Katie's Diner specifically about opportunity to, if, if this were to happen, that they might be a little bit displaced in their, or their customers might be a little bit displaced in parking and those kinds of things. And we anticipate Trotter, or, sorry, Taloa, reaching out to those businesses to try and figure out some kind of an amenable situation. One, one thing that I did not point out earlier was that you'll see in your packet a letter of support from your CBB board as well, signed by your CBB Chair Debbie Prather, who's in attendance tonight. Would we be able to do?
Well, wait, so we're gonna figure out an access dilemma after the fact?
The, the contract is, the, the street closure is what Taloa has requested. I went over to Katie's and asked if they had been approached, because I knew that, I know that they have a community outreach portion of their organization in, in Dream Portal. I asked if they had been contacted by that. At that point, 10 days ago, they had not. But, uh...
But that's just one of, how many businesses are gonna, how much access, how many businesses do we lose access to?
Roughly eight.
Total? In the, in every closure that they do, it's only eight?
Mm-hmm. Because there's ingress and egress for other, other avenues pretty much outside of the first and Cleveland stage location.
So it won't be as bad as Mumford and Sons, is what I'm trying, is what I'm asking.
No. And the, the Chamber of Commerce, a few, maybe, maybe eight months ago, maybe nine months ago, talk, had someone from the Oklahoma Travel Association come in and talk about whenever your business is displaced by special events. They were, they were targeting specifically about movies, movies being shot and, you know, businesses having to be closed for days upon a time, what the powers of your business are that you can ask for. And so I think that we're gonna take kind of that same mentality to making sure that our businesses understand that they have, you know, some, some authority to make, make certain requests, to make sure that their needs are met. That was, that was a discussion that we specifically had again with Katie's Diner.
Yeah, I think there's a couple other businesses along that, along Cleveland...
On the south side.
That are impacted there also. I think obviously we have a balance here of trying to create an environment that is positive for inviting businesses, in this case festivals, to come. We also need to protect our businesses that are here.
Absolutely.
And, and also make it convenient for customers to use those, those businesses. And, and that's a challenge. And I am concerned also that if, if we go ahead with this, finding a solution after the fact is a little bit more difficult than trying to come up with it at the beginning for a plan.
And we have, we have told Taloa and Dream Portal to make sure that they are contacting these businesses. I know that they have been out, specifically, I know that they've been to the shops on East Oklahoma, but we have made it very clear that our expectations are that you reach out to these businesses to talk about what they can expect for, for the week that you're here.
And have there been any discussions concerning part, the parking situation? I know...
Yeah.
A number of people have expressed some concern, especially on Friday with the competing football game.
You're right.
And one of their venues.
Whenever the first press release came out and we saw some concern from other stakeholders in the tourism industry in Guthrie, we immediately looked to kind of have a secondary plan for downtown. We told them at that point, you will be responsible for finding an alternative for parking. We can talk to you about downtown staging and everything like that, but parking you're probably gonna have to do on, on your own privately leasing land, finding transportation for your ticket holders, those kinds of things. We made that very clear whenever we had to kind of scramble for the Plan B.
And my last question, so far anyway. The Dream Productions, Taloa, is, is given access to hire or contract with food vendors in this contract. I didn't see anything that those food vendors need to, need to comply with city of Guthrie requirements and regulations.
For, for any mobile merchant coming in, and you saw this with, with Queen of the Prairie, for any mobile merchant due to a ordinance that was passed in fall of 2014, any mobile merchant that is coming in is required to pay a permit for those, and then, and that is largely to protect our brick and mortars.
So even though that's not specified in the, in the contract?
It's already covered through city policy.
That's already covered, okay? All right?
And, and the city, I'm sorry, collects that, not the festival?
Yes, that's a permit fee taken in the community development offices.
Outside of this, this contract we're looking at, okay. And just to add on top of the mayor's concerns, I'm concerned with our infrastructure, our historic parks and things like that. That's why I'm trying to keep that as protected as possible too. So along with our businesses and our bricks and mortar and our historic buildings in downtown, to keep them safe, along with our parks, we wouldn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions at this point? So the, the motion before us, or the, the item on the agenda is to, is to take action on this lease agreement.
Yeah, what is the, I've got another question, a couple of them actually. So what is the typical liability insurance that should be?
For, for most special events that we bring into town, we require a million dollars in liability insurance.
Okay. For every occurrence?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's not how this one reads.
For, for your festivals and those kinds of things that come in, and that's, that's kind of typical, that would be the standard, I think, from what I understand, for even private, private venues as well.
What you have is a million dollar coverage, 100,000 for personal injury, single occurrence, and 25,000 for property damage, single occurrence.
Mm-hmm. That's a far cry from a million.
That's not a million per occurrence.
So that's the one question. Um, the second one, and show me in this agreement where the city, it looked to me like the festival kept all the money inclusive of anything that had to do with vendor trucks, vendors, all of it.
Meaning we don't get a percentage of sales?
No, meaning that we don't get a permit fee.
Again, that's covered under another policy that was already implemented. That, that was a policy that I mentioned from fall of 2014.
And that's where I was getting back to it, maybe it was the part that I need to clarify that was at mineral wells. Maybe they don't get a, maybe we don't get the permit fee when the vendors are at mineral wells on the deal.
The, the permit fee is for the entire city. We've had, we've had food trucks that have come in and, that have never used public infrastructure, but private infrastructure, private parking lots, those kinds of things, that have paid a permit fee as well. And so it's kind of, it is all encompassing for the entire city of Guthrie. And it's a yearly fee of $75.
Are you talking about tent camping fee that a camper would pay?
No, I was talking about, are they gonna allow, well, and furthermore, because we have something else on the agenda that we need to determine as well, are we, are they asking to forego our ordinance of, of drinking within mineral wells park? Because that's not in here.
The, the alcohol has been limited to the downtown area. That was something that we, we had expressed, they had never made a request to have any alcohol allowed in the camping area.
Okay, and out of curiosity, why aren't we getting part of the gate, so to speak?
I'll tell you, we, we've continued operations under the last kind of guidance that we've received, and we, you know, the 62nd City Council, you know, through the rate and fee advisory committee, had said that they didn't want to focus on the, the charging of any festivals or anything like that. We wanted to be welcoming of festivals and, you know, us opening up the cottonwood flats, those kinds of things are pro tourism. Whereas, you know, asking for gate fee is maybe a typical standard for private, private venues and those kinds of things, but not even a complete operating policy for most of them. I think that you see some, you know, $5 at the door with the, with the host getting a cut of, you know, a dollar or something like that, but even that's not a 100% rule. Even that's not a 100% rule for all private venues.
So the, the CBB, which fully endorses this, I understood you to say, you're comfortable that, that most cities, most governmental arenas that would host this would, would not be charging a, a fee or a part of the take?
You know, I, I really can't say for what other, other cities have done in the past, the city of Guthrie has not charged a gate fee or a fee to have a festival in, on publicly owned land.
Okay.
I don't believe we get a part of the gate fees for bluegrass.
I don't think we do either.
So I'm not sure that we should extend it just because of this, we need to be more consistent.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, and to that point, she's absolutely right, and maybe that needs to be revisited as far as the bluegrass contract as well. I mean, again, I, I think that we're all for festivals and the whole nine yards, but where do we, where do we make the money? Okay, I know we make the money on tax.
We're gonna have to draw a line somewhere, though.
We're gonna have to draw a line somewhere, I agree.
And the reason why I'm saying it is I, I don't want us to start in on, on going along saying we're gonna say, Cody, you need to go out and tell them we wanna negotiate a contract where we have to start getting a gate fee. We'll drive several of these other, you know, bluegrass will leave us, you know, and I don't want that, because that's turned out to be one of the biggest things we've had around, and I think a lot of people like it, and I've gone to it several times, so I don't want to start that, or we'll, we'll lose something like that. And that's what I'm afraid of. Mumford and Sons was a one-time event, it'd be great to have one of those every year, where it brings in, I don't know how many, you know, thousands of dollars, you know, some 300 and some thousand dollars, it, you know, it'd be great, but I don't think that's gonna happen every year.
No, but I think that one thing we need, do need to do with it, we are a festival destination, that we do need to relook at the permitting process of these festivals, because we are, as we have talked over and over, we're money strapped. We only get money from sales tax and fees, water fees. This is, we don't need to go out and become, or ask the moon from the festivals coming to town, but I think that we really do need to think about a looking at making something from the festivals that come through other than a sales tax, because that is too, you can't guarantee anything from that.
Well, I'd like to see a precedent of other cities approximately our size or a little larger, and see what they do. Do they get gate fees, or?
Well, I'm not just saying gate fees, possibly permitting fees, or some other way of making some revenue for the city to help the city with its budgetary problems that we have right now. There's a lot of other ways that I think we can do it, I'm not just saying gate fees may, and that is, again, it comes down to a contractual thing, it doesn't have to be with everybody, it's, it's what we contract with that particular festival at the time, I feel. Some festivals we may not, there may be some people that we do, depending on the size or the type. It, it should be a negotiated thing per festival, and if we do a multi-year thing, well, then we can sign a multi-year agreement at that time, once we get to that, so.
It, it, it could be that we need to take this up in, in workshop for future...
That's a good idea.
For, to set future, future guidelines and guidance, or ask the, the CBB committee to assist in establishing those, those guidelines for us for the future. I think the challenge is, we have this, we have this action item in front of us, what action does the council desire, desire to take?
I would like to make a motion to show good faith from Taloa by having them put up $2,500 as a non-refundable down payment for their festival, and implementing the bullet points that we have talked about tonight, that we have already printed out, and then go from there with their negotiation. Well, that would be the end of the, the, the motion at that point, then you can negotiate what we put in later on, once he sees this.
I'll second that.
Was that clear? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I kind of got drifted off.
Are you just saying, basically what you're telling the staff to do is to negotiate the contract? And you're saying you want all of these bullet points incorporated into?
I would say we'll, well, I would like to, yes, yes, bottom line, yes.
We didn't discuss all of these items.
No, we didn't, and that was the problem. I think that, that's why I said we would negotiate some of these, I didn't say, some of these are semantics, some of these we just discussed, actually, with a, a gate fee, that is one of the bullet points here, that would not be in the motion, so.
Is that the 10%?
Yes.
So do we, so what we want to do then is let Cody go ahead and negotiate this, is that we want to do?
Well, I, I think authorize Cody to negotiate the contract and bring it back to the council with these bullet points in it.
Yes, yes.
And then bring, bring the contract back for the council to...
Okay.
Cody, do you need a contract approved soonly? Is that, I'm trying to read your face.
Well, that, the other motion could be, approve this agreement with these bullet points in it, and then all they've gotta do is sign it, if they agree to it.
Right.
Well, and the dilemma I see that, I think from looking at your eyes as well, is that A, this is already being marketed, B, tickets are already being sold, and there's no contract in place, okay? And I think if there's other questions here, since the CBB is involved in it, we do have Debbie here that might be able to answer some of them as well. Hate to throw you in the frying pan, but, you know, I mean, to sit here and, and to totally renegotiate this contract...
And that's not really what's happening here, it's just adding some changes to making things more clear. I feel that that's an acceptable way to go.
And one of the things we want to make certain that we recognize is that we have, we're down the road seven months on this. They're making plans, we've been making plans, and if there are gonna be some changes, they need to be minor changes, and they need to be changes that do not scare this festival away, nor any others.
I agree.
Right. And I would agree to that, that is very true. We're not trying to run them off, we want the festivals.
Cody? I'm sorry. Cody?
I, I, I do, I do think that Mr. Pennell had a great point, is that, you know, minor, minor changes to where I think that after the no action that was taken during last, during the last city council, I think that that kind of, you know, show, gave some concern to Taloa. I, I am fearful of what a, I, I would consider these drastic changes as far as gate fee and those kinds of things, after we hadn't really, I mean, we've never spoken to them about that. I, I do fear that we would go completely from the opposite end of welcoming them to almost saying, not welcome. I, I, I am fearful of that.
Well, I don't think that's the case, I think that they are welcome, but by the same token, okay, marketing and ticket sales have happened without a contract, it's as simple as that.
And I, I think that the quick fix for them would be to go get a contract from a private entity the next day. If, if they, if they don't have a contract tonight, I think that the quick fix for them would be to go and get another contract from a private arena the next, tomorrow morning. And...
Do you think?
And completely end any negotiations for us right now.
Do you think, Cody, when you eliminate the gate fee, these other things are not, most of them are really not very significant? I mean, are there any particular bullet points on this besides that that you think are deal killers?
No. The, the wording as far as, you know, keeping heavy trucks out of mineral wells, that's, that was for camping, that was what that was requested for. Again, we talked about parking, I think that you're gonna see more of your loading inside of downtown, more than anything. I don't think that you're gonna see heavy production trucks in, in the park necessarily.
What a, we have a motion in a second. Right now, we have a motion and a second that has not been amended.
Amend is that, well, we want to drop on item three, rent and recoverable costs. If there's a, on the first end of the festival, shall we made a 10% of ticket sales and camping fees, we can strike back.
I think it needs to be amended to approve the contract with these things, not just to continue to negotiate it. That's the issue.
That's, well...
We need to stop negotiating and say, "This is where it's gonna be," and that's where your motion needs to go. The amendment needs to say, "We want this contract with these amendments," not, "We need to continue negotiating." That's the part that needs to be changed.
That makes it more clear. Yes.
Can we have that as the motion?
Yes.
Henry, can...
You have to withdraw your motion.
Who would like, who would like to amend?
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would you like to amend your initial motion to reflect what...
Yes, to what I said. I will amend my initial emotion to what Mr. Thomas said.
And I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? I have, I have...
Well, yeah, I've got some discussion here, because we haven't been through the bullets to know that if it's realistic to put it in the contract or not. So, what are we gonna do? Just give Cody this and say, "Here, go get this added to the contract"?
That's what the motion was.
Yes.
That's what the motion was.
And I believe that these have been vetted by our city attorney as well. Is that correct, Randall?
I've gone through them. We had some discussion. Mr. Councilman Wood and I had some discussion, and many I agreed with. There were a couple that I questioned whether they were necessary.
And that was, if they're not necessary, I think that that'll be just a...
Well, and this one's the one you and I talked about, as far as if, if for some unknown reason, one of these, the area that they wanna put on the festival, storm-related or whatever, is not available, can't be used, and there's a couple of sentences that says, "We will help them find another space." It really doesn't put an obligation on us, and I think we would do that anyway.
Right, I think we would do that regardless of the venue.
So, that's item six, and that item six, I didn't feel was really necessary.
And that's fine, that can be struck. That's not a...
But item seven is a cost to the festival. That is to provide event insurance. So, and I don't know whether y'all discussed that one or not. That's not an issue?
Plan to do what, event insurance?
In our discussion phase, the thing that concerns me is that there is not a parking plan in advance of our approval. There is not a plan to help those businesses that are negatively impacted by being landlocked by the streets that are proposed to be closed. And I'm really concerned that if those things don't happen after this approval, obviously our leverage is not there, because we've already approved it. And I'm not pleased that that wasn't a part of this process. And I would like to protect, I would like to protect the people that are coming downtown, not only for the festival, but also to carry on regular business. Where do they park? And as well as those businesses that are not gonna have access, other than walking access, to their entry point, to their businesses.
I would like to make one point, and I'm not trying to be negative, but we did not have that type of an agreement with Mumford &amp; Son. And I personally feel like that if we're going to make those requests, it should be done for future events, and we need to maybe either have a subcommittee to come up with a correct and proper contract that we use in the future that addresses these items. But I'm really concerned, as Cody says, that we are not going to have festivals even choose to come here, if we make it so difficult for them to come.
Well, do you realize this is a future event? There's no contract in place, and it's a future event that happens in September.
Right, I am aware of that.
So, this isn't something that's already on the books. I mean, it is on the books on Teloah's side of the house. But there's no contract. So, it is a future event. But I do agree that it is what it is right now, and that we should have a workshop addressing all fees and conditions moving forward. You know, at the end of the day, you know, we can shut off downtown and just have a beer fest, okay, if that's what we want, if that's what we wanna become. And, you know, just make sure the businesses close down, if that's our intent.
We didn't have this discussion with Mumford &amp; Son. There was no complaint that I was aware of. It was one of the smoothest festivals I've ever seen. We haven't had these...
You didn't have business complaints over that?
I don't think we had.
There was a lot.
I mean, we were not made aware of anything significant, no.
Okay. Well, it's like I say, we're starting to make material changes now in a contract that is probably not too good of a thing. And we should probably limit it, let it be successful, and let it stand on its own, and just reconvene at a workshop in the future to discuss how we wanna move forward on additional festivals and parties and concerts that we have.
Okay, we have a motion before us that's been made and seconded to approve the lease agreement with the inclusion of the suggested changes, mostly in language, and the exclusion of item number three, first sentence, which spoke to, "Festival shall remit 10% of all ticket sales," et cetera, et cetera. Is there any further discussion?
That first line says $10,000. He said $2,500 several times. You mean $2,500?
Yes, we've, that's been amended to $2,500.
That's also what needs to be included in that, is what you mean.
Yes, that...
Cody, are the rest of these out of line for what your discussions have been?
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just go on record to make sure that everybody's aware that the insurance is at a super-substandard on the liability side of this deal. And I think Randall might be able to attest to that.
It's the low end. The city itself's protected, 'cause we've got Tort Claims Act that protects us, but we wanna protect the public also. It is, it's the low end, but it is what it is.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, please submit your vote.
All votes for Randall.
See the vote. Unanimous to approve the lease agreement with the provisions as identified in the motion. Item number four. Possible discussion, possible action of resolution to waive selected sections of our Code of Ordinances for the Multiple Scrosses Spike Event, also at the same time as the item of the festival we just talked about at Highland Park.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city wishes to provide a temporary waiver for two articles within the Guthrie Code of Ordinances concerning alcohol consumption inside a public park, and also park closure time. The timeframe for this waiver is proposed to be Saturday, September 26th, from 12:00 PM until 8:00 AM on September 27th. The articles proposed to be waived will now allow alcohol consumption inside of Highland Park, but not to include the pool, and will suspend the closure of the park at 12:30 PM on September 26th.
Is that AM?
Pardon?
Closing at, right, 30 minutes after noon, is that what you're saying?
They wanna...
Should be AM, yeah.
The event will actually run until 12:30 PM the next day. The closing, the waiving of the closure of the park, typically, I think that that's 10:00 or 10:30, and so this just allows them to camp overnight. But the event itself actually runs the period of the waiver will run until 12:30 the next afternoon.
Now, does this allow for any setup and tear-down time?
They are, that would be something that we would typically do in the operations side with an exclusive use. The reason that this policy is coming forward, Council, is because of the waiving of the ordinances. So, they would allow, they would be allowed to use the park for exclusive use through a simple form that we have, that's found in my office, that goes through each of the department heads, a lot of them who have worked with me on this project, to work with Bike MS.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, submit your vote, please.
All votes for Randall.
Let's see the votes. Again, a unanimous approval of the resolution to waive selected items of our ordinance. Item number five, discussion, possible action, resolution 2015-9, establishing a 911 emergency telephone fee for calendar year 2016. Staff comments?
This resolution allows the collection of service fees on the landlines for 911. This recommendation is for 3%, which comes from the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. In this calendar, it's not fiscal year, this is a calendar year, the anticipated collection amount is $5,500. Our recommendation is that we approve this, and this is an annual resolution that comes before the council.
So moved. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please submit your votes.
All votes for Randall.
Let's see the votes. A unanimous approval of that resolution. Item number six, discussion, possible action, authorizing city staff to adopt the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a need to appoint or reappoint two individuals to the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board.
Well, wait, wait. Sorry. I would make the motion that we go ahead and approve that, since we approved it in the Guthrie Public Works Authority.
Sorry?
I second.
Number six.
Number six. We've already approved that, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
We approved it in the Public Works, so I'd move that we go ahead and approve it here as well.
And I second.
Any further discussion? That's why it looked familiar.
Yeah.
Because we had already seen it. Okay. Not hearing any further discussion, please submit your votes.
All votes for Randall.
A unanimous approval of the adoption of that ordinance reflecting changes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
This is for Randall. When we see something like that on a city council thing, couldn't that be on the, if it was on the Public Works agenda, couldn't it be on the consent agenda for this one?
It could.
Okay, just, it makes it confusing when we do that, so I would think we could do that.
I was confused. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, now, item number seven, discussion, possible action to appoint or reappoint City of Guthrie representatives to the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board. Term limits, July 15 to June 18. Staff comments, please.
We have need to reappoint or reappoint two individuals to the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board. Justin, you have any comments on this, please, sir? I think we have three candidates, do we not?
There are three candidates and two positions to be filled. Every three years, we fall upon two individual terms that we need to fill. All candidates qualified and recommended, and we look forward to working with whoever you put forth.
I would entertain a motion to nominate one of the individuals.
I would like to do that, and I would like to nominate Trey Ayers and Kerry Owen to fill those two positions.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Call for a vote.
Hearing none, please submit your vote.
All votes for Randall.
It's unanimous from the council to have Mr. Ayers and Mr. Owens beyond the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board, July 15, June 18. City Manager Report, welcome.
Well, thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the interim City Manager. As we mentioned earlier, today is my one-week anniversary, and I'm still here. You haven't run me off yet. And in that week, I've met with every department director, with the exception of the library director. I've also reviewed, toured their facilities. I'm very impressed with the facilities, and especially impressed with the department director's professionalism. I think we have a great staff, and I think they have professional staffs in their respective departments as well. There will be a change coming to the city organization. Justin will be leaving us on July 6th. Good luck to you and your family. Thank you for your years of service. We appreciate that, certainly. Mayor, also, the city hall and non-emergency offices will be closed Friday, July 3rd, in observance of Independence Day. We won't be meeting before then, so I wanted to put that on there. We also have some events coming up. These are lazy AE events on 6/19. They present grand opening jackpot team roping, and then on the 21st, a Breeders' International Show. The Pollard Theater from 6/19 until July 11th will present company. The extras that we have, we wanted to mention the summer reading program at the Guthrie Public Library, and also the farmer's market, which is, runs from 8:00 AM till noon every Saturday at the northwest corner of Division and Harrison. Thank you again, a pleasure to be here.
Good, good. Very, very good. Item number nine, comments from members of the city council. Councilwoman Paget?
Thank you. I just wanna tell Justin how much I've enjoyed working with him since 2013. I do wish you well. All goes well with your wife's new venture, perhaps. And a special thank you to the city staff, once and again. I've never met a group of people that works so well and gets so much done on so little. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor.
Gosh, you beat me to everything I was gonna say, so I'll say the same thing, and Justin, we're gonna miss you, but I, I mean, it knocks, you gotta go. So, thanks for all your work and hard, really hard, and thanks to the staff, too.
Councilman Edward.
Again, Justin, thanks. Good luck. Hope everything works out for you in your new venture. And again, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking on the job and keeping us all straight. Thank you for listening to us, and I'm glad you're here, keeping us going. So, it's really good. I would like, well, we can do this, we already have. We're going to workshop the festival things and talk about that at a later date, which is great. And again, glad to be here and doing what we're doing.
Good. Councilman Thomas.
I can, you know, everything's been said. You know, thanks, everybody, for what they're doing, and welcome, Larry, to Guthrie. I'm gonna call you on something. Is this person in the audience someone that you should have introduced?
This is my bride of 45 years here, Claudia Pennell.
I'm trying to keep you out of trouble.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It takes a village.
That's all I got.
Councilman Bothrow.
Yeah, and Justin, you've done a great job, and I know you'll go soaring with the eagles as you move forward, obviously. And congratulations to you and your family. Thanks, staff, for everything that you do, and I've got to, as a new council member, I've got to engage a little bit in that. And so I've got to see, or at least get a feel for what you guys deal with, and appreciate you.
Good. Well, congratulations on 45 years, you and Claudia. That is, that is significant, so you should be very, very... You should be very proud of that. I know you are. I know you are. Justin, again, congratulations to you on your new opportunities, and thank you so much for what you've done for the airport here. You've done really, really good. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.